Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome everybody to the regular meeting of the Abboton School Committee. It's Tuesday, January 30th, 2024, in the middle high school library. I'd like to ask everybody to please stand to comply. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Before we get started, I'll let everybody know Daniel Graff is sick tonight, so she is not here. Is there anybody hearing a bit? Does anybody like to address the committee before we get started? Anything do I just ask you to please come to the podium and please state your name and address for the records?
My name is Michael Dahl, three Pine Crest Road. And you know, I want to stop at the fair and also a little history. So, twenty-three. Then a great part of people followed him, women who were mourning and lamenting. But Jesus turned to them and said, daughters of Jerusalem, do not weep for me. Instead, weep for yourself and over your children. Now also, they led out two other criminals with them in order to execute them. And when they arrived at the places that is called Calvary, they crucified them there with the robbers, one to the right and the other to the left. Then Jesus said, Father, forgive them, for they know not what they do. And I'm here today to ask you, because I think it was a really great mistake to remove Good Friday off. You know, on, you know, with so many other things going on, on the one who, the time and eternity hinges before Christ and after Christ. We just callously removed Good Friday off. And I'm asking, listen, I didn't know how to bring this to the committee. You know, beforehand, I don't expect you to vote on it now. I think, I think it was, it was a big mistake. And I'd like to, I'd like to put it at some point in front of you to, I mean, I would love to. I mean, it's March 29th, it's Good Friday. And I believe it needs to be a day off. You know, this is, you know, not just for Christians who believe in the Son of God. Jews believe he's a great prophet. You know, Muslims believe he's a prophet. This is, this is, this is, you know, this is something that I think is extremely important that, that we shouldn't just take away so callously as I believe we did. So I'll put it before you for a vote. You know, but I understand that I didn't bring it to you before this. So, yeah, that's really where I stand. I think it's, it's, it's really wrong to do. We give days off for a whole thing, teachers' days, you know. And yet, one who hinges time, we, we, we just remove it, the day off. I mean, I just, I really think that it should be reconsidered, and I'd like to put that before, before you.
So, Mr. McDonald, is your opinion it was a callous decision? It's not my opinion. We did talk about it, we did have meetings about it. If you're talking about March 29th, 2024, that calendar's already been approved last year. I don't even know if we could make a motion to fix it, we cannot do it tonight. I could see if the committee would like to going forward. Our committee, our calendar for next year will be on a future agenda, probably March 29th, based on current highlights. In terms of days off for teachers, I don't know what you mean about by that. I'm not asking you to explain it either. But I don't think we just have days off for teachers. They have sick days, like every other profession has. So I don't know how else to address it. This year's calendar, as far as it's set as of right now, there'll be no change of that tonight. I could ask the committee if they would like to reconsider it at a future meeting, but I can't promise anything on that. The next year's school calendar, we voted on, it'll be part of the agenda, when it's generally March, April.
March, April this year?
Correct.
Okay. All right. I mean, yeah, I mean, I feel like it could be pretty easy to rectify. I mean, we rectify mistakes all the time.
So it's your opinion it's a mistake, though. It is not the opinion of this committee.
Well, I'm, I'm, okay.
It is not the opinion of this committee that it's a mistake, because we made the decision. We don't feel we made a mistake.
Okay. So it was a unanimous vote?
When we voted on it, yes, it was. So we did not vote to take away Good Friday. We voted on our calendar, which included school on Good Friday.
Got it. Okay.
We do not vote on any particular days off.
All right, even though it's been a day off for as long as Abboton, then schools.
It was the first time we ever talked about the calendar at a couple of meetings, to have the opinions out there and presented. And so that's kind of where it fell. But we did not vote for a particular day, is what I'm getting at. We voted the calendar as a whole.
Right, and that was callously overlooked.
It was callously what?
Overlooked, Good Friday.
So that's your opinion again, as I stated when this communication started. It's your opinion it's callously overlooked. That's not my opinion, or the committee's opinion.
Okay. So I'm gonna, I'll be here to put it to the, to the school board, you know, because I believe it's, I believe, you know, it's something that should never have changed.
Okay.
And, and I believe there's a lot of people that feel that way.
Yep, okay.
So, and for the good, again, for the good of the children as well. Yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. Anybody else have anything they'd like to address the committee on before we get started? Okay, thank you. First item up on the agenda is a reading and approval of minutes from January 9th, 2024, which was our preliminary fiscal year 2025 budget meeting. You have to get a chance, I've been looking for a motion to approve in a second or amend.
I'm a motion for there.
All in favor? Up first, report of the Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, Dr. Boss. You're just gonna have Mr. Leonelli come right up. Mr. Leonelli will be presenting the music department's update first.
Hello there, everybody. Excuse me, my voice is, I'm just getting over sick from last week, so I appreciate your patience.
I heard. Twice.
I was very bored last week. So it's so exciting to be here in front of you. This is my first time speaking to the committee. Ever since I've moved here to Abboton, I've only heard so many great things about our music department, Paul K. Smith, the history of the band, the legacy of, of the show choir, the drama programs here. So it's great to, you know, continue, sort of be a very small piece of that. So coming into this year, I did a quick little state of the, asked my department to state of the state. This was not mandated by, by anyone, it's more just, I wanted to see where we're at each school. What are we doing really well? What are, what are things that we can continue to improve upon? So my department, by the end of the year, will be just giving me just their thoughts on where we are, so I can really kind of organize and as a team, kind of plan the next few years ahead. So that information will be very valuable. So we're in a very exciting process of seeing where we are at. And some of the things that I have listed here are very small, friends, so I do apologize. Simple adjustments. So with what we have, what can we do to just make our program better? And with the idea of just really promoting recruiting and retention of our program, there's a couple of things that we enacted just this year that are actually really, really beneficial. And I've seen some great positive responses, not only from students, but also from the community at large. So the marching band, we used to do performances throughout the year, five or so, kind of scattered throughout, very different, various things. And what we were looking to do in terms of building engagement and just getting our attendance a little bit higher, was just to have a collection of performances in the fall. It's a typical marching band, fall competitive season. And with that adjustment, just we're doing US bands, local circuit. Retention and recruiting has been very high. We've also included our color bar back, which has been a great asset to our visual performance. And I think we're on the right path with marching band. Joint concerts with AMS and AHS, band concert and chorus concert, has been something that, we started off with logistical issue, but finding out later on, as we were talking between principals, like, how can we make this work? We noticed that there's a benefit in terms of students seeing each other and seeing a pathway forward. So just an example, band performance, which I typically run the band. This past winter, we started off with a high school band, starting off our concert, showing students where we are. That's the highest ensemble on our campus, followed by our middle school performance, kind of showing us where we are, and it's great for those students to see the upper echelons, upper parts. And then my favorite, we all performed together at the very end of the concert. I think we did Rudolph the Red-Nosed Reindeer. It was just, it was very fun. And then finishing off on our short little modifications is how we're approaching our grade five, six concert. For those that aren't too familiar with the program, we do about, once a week, learning instruments. And to try to find a way to make it less stressful, it's, I try to take this as an informants, where it's really fun, and we actually had Santa Pope during our concert. It was great. He cited that our concert was the best in the world. And I think just seeing music from a different lens of notes and rhythms and just community is very important. Just another aspect that I'm really excited to kind of see our music program through. It's definitely community-based. Music is very important. It's what we do, of course, it's a vehicle, but I feel like the community is even, maybe a little more so important. This is progress from my predecessor from last year, Steve Shannon, who I just saw, he's working on the musical. So he's not too far away, but I'm happy to kind of report on where we are at. We have dedicated music teachers for each of the elementary schools. I know it assisted a lot with, with scheduling, assisted a lot with giving some flexibility up here to middle school, high school. And I think we're on the right path, and all those teachers did phenomenal work down there. Music teachers are teaching in their primary field, so this is the first year in a while where, like, the band teacher's teaching just the band, the chorus teacher is just teaching the chorus. And I find that approach like that just gives the students the best education for that primary, for that little niche of, of music. So I'm a very good band teacher, of course, a little less so. So they're definitely getting their best education right now, so I'm happy to report that. And then I was briefly talking about the marching band from last year. Definitely some great attendance, there we go. So attendance had been kind of hit or miss, but now that we have consistent rehearsals, consistent performances in the fall. And it's really like nine weeks, that's another thing that we try to sell to the students and families, just nine weeks. I think that's been some great positives for us. This is more informational stuff, I'll kind of go through it quickly, but this is definitely the record. We did a great job, parents kind of leaving a charge on the craft fair. It's a huge fundraiser for us, it's another wonderful way for us to showcase our gorgeous building here in Abboton. I think we're still focusing, figuring out our date, but I believe it's Saturday, September 28th. This upcoming Saturday, the parents and I, the department will be very busy. This whole huge building is gonna be filled with music, with students auditioning for semis, so that's gonna be very exciting. And then we have tentative music department trip. I've been having a very exciting time with our travel liaison, trying to plan a destination to Boston, just to kind of keep our costs down for this first year, a little, make my job just a little bit easier in terms of just less stress. So we're trying to showcase Boston, but it's a work in progress, I confirmed it, so we're, we're on our way. But it would be, it's the Roosevelt Street Gardner Museum, and the Boston Symphony Orchestra gives some ideas of what we'll be doing. And then this great concert list coming up will be the same idea, combined joint performances between AMS and high school, and then the high six concert. I apologize in advance, I need to find a better way to explain this, but this is enrollment-based for our performance ensemble. It's kind of like the numbers. I wish I could maybe show this a little bit better, but I'm happy to report that our grade five, six band numbers have continued to increase coming out of COVID. That's been something that I think is very beneficial to all the ensembles going forward. Grade seven, eight band, there is, we're finding about a hundred is about the kind of number we'll be floating on. Seven, eighth grade chorus, a hundred is probably about another rate number to kind of focus in on. However, I want to note where our deployments are, which is why I apologize, it's a little bit confusing. Our high school band has had some growth, that is probably showing some of the work that we've been doing with recruiting. I'm a little nervous with our high school chorus numbers. I'm not sure why there was a decline, but it's just something that is on my radar. So we've been really focusing on band experience. Now we're focusing on chorus experience, recruiting, making that a positive experience. And just for the community and her only colleagues and know, health can be measured by enrolling and retention. And it's kind of a cyclical, it's kind of funny, you know, it's, the bigger it is, it's easier to do. The smaller it is, it's harder to do. And when it's smaller, it's also hard to recruit, because, you know, it's one trumpet per part. And it's just, but when you have many friends playing your part, it's easy to participate in. So as the numbers grow, it's gonna be really great. And I do have to report, at least with the high school band, I have noticed with even just those five or six students from 2021, 2022, it's, it's great, it's great, it's a great class, so I'm very excited for that. I'm aware of the high school chorus numbers, and I do want to improve that. Because if we're getting in terms of territory where it might not be comfortable for those students to go concert, or at least the ones that need punishment conditions, so that's on my radar. For the vision of the graduate, this is something that I love kind of working on and working towards. Because I feel like that we do this every single day. All my colleagues, of course, do this every single day. But in terms of music, it's every, every moment is, is what we're working towards. You know, playing a note, you're taking a huge breath, you're listening to your neighbor, you're making sure you play the right note, so you're making sure not to play when it's between LA speaking, or of that. So this is a great opportunity for students in just 50 minutes, just to kind of just work their brains, work their, their knowledge, but also work towards being a great member of the community. So I think that we do a great job in that. And as I mentioned, the music programs are more than just notes, as I mentioned, community first. And I'll really talk about that in a moment. I really am finding that, that students are selling really well, especially if they have opportunities to get away from their phones and just talk to each other. Really make sure that we have time in our classes to, to engage with each other, make sure that they just don't see each other as a last name, or, or how are we organized, these are students collected by instrument or by vocal part. And it's a great way to engage, you know, not only music makers, but with each other throughout. And that kind of leads way to strengths and why music in 2024. This is something that even I engaged on. There's so many things that are happening in the world, in our community, where it's like, you know, why, how does music fit in? It's community building. We're noticing, especially in my work at Boston College, that it's becoming more competitive to be in college. And one of the things that, at least what we're doing in Boston College, I'm sure elsewhere, is like, we're trying to tell admissions that if there's two equal students, please take the student with music. Because what we're finding in our studies is that students that participate in music in college, there's two trends that pop out in terms of anything else that they do. One, they are more likely to volunteer. And two, they're more likely to be a part of civics, or more likely to vote. So believe it or not, in terms of anything that we do, my colleague, that's not my study, my study, my colleague at Boston College, he studied these trends in higher education. Those are the two things that we found. So back and away from music, I think those are some great things that our department does here in Abboton, where we really could help showcase that our students are great people, they're wonderful. And then the last part is another trend that we're noticing is that, gee, just one more thing. As colleges drop step, SAT college requirements, I think music is gonna be one of those things that slowly trickle to the top. And then trade schools, getting students into a room, working with each other. I think that's gonna be a trend that we start seeing very soon, that, you know, parents want to see that kind of work relationship and kind of that experience. Areas for growth and challenges. You're doing great, you're doing great, too. This is very similar to previous years, just making sure that, especially at the high school levels, we ever mentioned some of the lower numbers of the chorus. I don't think it's necessarily that reason. We gotta make sure that we really do whatever we can to get as many students into these classes as possible. More students in the classes will be way more enjoyable. One of the things I'm encouraging eighth graders going to ninth graders, if there's one year to do music, it's definitely ninth grade. It's an easy transition in terms of, you already know your teachers, you know a lot of your friends. If you're a ninth grade student, you don't know what to do here in Abboton, you're gonna be around 10th, 11th, 12th graders right away. So it's a great transitional point. Continue attention when possible for us to keep teaching our primary fields. I know instructional minutes is always be a very difficult thing, but our teachers down in the elementary ages would love to teach a little bit more, give our students a little bit more things to do. If that's something that we always continue to grow on. And then just making sure that we really just prioritize and just focus on what we can do together as a team to move our department forward. So that's something that part of that, kind of the state of the state as a, as a department. And last, but not least, I'm so thrilled, I'm just gonna work with, to, to find ways where we can find opportunity to grow. These are things that I'm gonna throw out tomorrow, in terms of what can be successful. But there's a lot that we can do, there could be teachers that are focused on particular instruments. There's also a huge group of students that stopped performing in high school. Doesn't mean they don't like music anymore. So here's kind of a list of ideas of classes that could be offered. Again, I don't necessarily see these happening in the near future, but this is a great thing. Including the Eras Tour class, which I would love to teach, because I love Taylor Swift, it's very popular right now. But the future is very bright here in Abboton for music, and I really thank you all for your time. I welcome any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Leonelli.
I just have a comment. I think you're absolutely right about the schools, and now that most are test optional. You know, I work at a college, I have a senior who's applying to college, and definitely, especially in some of the more selective colleges, where those SAT scores would really differentiate candidates. I'm reading a lot about how those involved in art and music, having the opportunity to submit tapes and portfolios is really making a difference in terms of, like, that well-rounded student. I think that is a really great thing to focus on and to encourage kids. And I, you know, I hope that you can find ways, the school can find ways to kind of work out some of those scheduling things. I know my daughter is choosing to not take another AP because she wanted to take bands this year, which is fine.
She was phenomenal.
With me. You know, she. She needed that after, you know, the first half of the year, being really challenging. And we were totally in support of that, you know, not taking that additional AP class, because she really enjoys it. So I hope that other kids have the opportunity to, to do that, because I think it's really valuable.
I have the mantra, we should, we had a great conversation, I think it was last summer, exciting but expensive. So I'm super excited, I know this can be very expensive, but I want to first work within our means, what we can do with the current resources to move our program forward. And then until we get to the point where like, okay, now then I can have a better case of like, small adjustments. But until I get there, definitely want to work with what we have.
Yeah, it's great.
Thank you.
I think jumping on that, too, I think people need to remember that music can be a great equalizer. We'll have, what, upwards of 900 people in this building on Saturday? Kids who are doing auditions, things like that. These are, believe it or not, translatable skills. This is their entryway into things like job, job interviews, things like that. The ability to perform is a lifelong skill. And if we're looking at the vision of the graduate as a lifelong learner, our music classes can do an awful lot to really help students grow into people who really can walk into a room and take command, feel good about what they're doing, and make some big impacts. So thank you for giving our students the opportunity to do that, not just in the classroom, but providing these opportunities beyond the classroom so that they can grow.
Mr. Leonelli, I was lucky enough to attend all of the band concerts. I just want, so one's a comment, then one's a question. So the comment, the middle school, high school joint concert with the seventh, eighth grade band, I thought that was awesome. That was the first time, right?
Yes.
Okay.
It started with logistical concerns, there were so many pieces that were physical.
No, it was great, it was great to see them and then let them see what can, like, can be, like, get to work with the high school kids as well. I mean, I think anytime the high school kids can interact with those that aren't in high school, I feel is a good opportunity. So wherever that can happen, I think is. My other thing was, it was a question regarding, you had the enrollment numbers for grade seven, eight chorus, and I know, I'm sorry, for grade seven, for the high school chorus. So my question is, grade seven, eight chorus had a big jump.
Yes.
Are a lot of, are a lot of those seventh graders, and that's what's causing the jump? Or is there a lot of eighth graders that could bump those high school numbers up next year?
It's possible that the high school numbers jump, the number of students that typically, this is not in Abboton, this is kind of a national thing, eighth grade to 10th, eighth, the ninth grade is a very difficult jump.
Of course, yeah.
It could be about 10% of students that continue.
Okay.
Increase that as much as possible.
Okay.
We're below that number, so it is a concern.
Yeah.
It is possible that a lot of those students do continue to high school course for next year. We're definitely working on that right now, talking about recruiting methods, just making it really simple to boost core students to see which avenues that they can do to participate. The scheduling is part of it, but I don't know what it is just yet. I don't know if it's, maybe it's experience, I don't know, because the course used to be very big.
Yeah, okay.
There's a lot of students that were having difficulties being in that type of environment.
Okay.
Kind of figured out what it is, but I don't have.
Yep, no, I saw that large number in seven, eight, and didn't know how many were eight. And could that provide just a natural bump as well, so?
It could, I think it will absolutely could do. And I hope, our goal is about between 15 and 20 for grade level.
Okay.
When we get to nine, 10, 11, 12, there is, we'll be some students that kind of slowly fall away.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Okay, great, well, thank you. Anybody else?
I have a few questions.
Yeah, good enough.
So first, thank you for the presentation. I think we have a very strong program that keeps getting stronger every year, and I think that's wonderful. Some of the things that I've seen outside of like the normal school hours, with like the open mic night. I think there's, is there a drum club in the middle school? I feel like I've seen a couple of musical clubs at the middle school level.
Yes, we have a band club. I did a drum club last year, I didn't do it this year, it was just a little too much for me after twelve. But we restarted our jazz band, our high school jazz band, they're actually looking to do open mic night for the high school. So there's some interest there, so I guess that's what matters.
Yeah, I think that's wonderful. I think it's a good opportunity for the younger kids to get interest outside of their traditional music classroom. I apologize, I don't know this offhand. What is the music requirement, middle school, fifth through eighth, they have either music band or chorus, correct?
Great question. So that could be actually another reason why the seven, eight numbers have such issue. That's our first in-school experience singing, other than classroom music experience. You know, there's some schools that have choirs at grade five and six as an option. We have some scapping, which we're not able to do it at right now, working to options with current resources right now for next year. Maybe it's possible to do the sixth grade chorus, just maybe a couple of little adjustments. I'm sorry, I lost your question.
So in middle school, theirs, every student takes music of some sort, either band or a music class between fifth and eighth, or chorus, if they're seven and eight. In the high school, what, is there any requirement for music?
No requirements, I can't speak to how it works in terms of credits. I don't know if it's arts, is there arts requirement credit? I apologize, it's my first year.
No, no, that's fine.
We don't, yeah, we don't, even if it's too much, we don't need it right this, we don't need it right away, so if you get it to us afterwards as well, if it's.
Yeah. No requirements, okay. So it's purely elective, it's purely scheduling and interests. Okay, that's helpful to know. For instruments in music class, I know I can fully appreciate your comment of, you know, kind of work with what you have right now and make that the best it can, it can be before you move on to something different. But when I was a kid, we, like, every seventh grader learned the guitar, every eighth grader learned the piano. Are there constraints to putting something like that beyond the recorder into our existing music program?
There will be certain things I wouldn't recommend to the committee, like starting like an orchestra here. I don't think that's, we have the funds for that type of thing, it's a, that's a huge upfront cost. For like guitars, ukuleles of the younger ages, it's, it's very tough, because those instruments don't last. So it's very possible that students kind of break them. So we try to use instruments that have lasted quite a long time. There's boom whackers of them, the younger students have, of course, the wonderful recorders. But once we get to seven, grade five, six, we try and stick to the bandishments. If there's students that comes with like piano experience, for instance, we try to make it work with them. I'll have students that want to learn guitar outside of school, and then when they get to a level where they can play the instrument, they can join us. Yes, there's definitely some limitations, it's not like we don't play guitar, it's just some limitations.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Mr. Leonelli, I know, so I just want to say, I know it's your first time as department head up there, presenting to us. I think you did a great job, so I just want to thank you for that, and thank you for your time. Up next is gonna, excuse me, up next is gonna be Ms. Corbett with the Science, Engineering, and Technology Department update.
All right, so good evening. I met many of you last year, my name is Nicole Corbett. I am the Science Department Head for the grades up through 12, Science, Technology, and Engineering Department. And thank you again for having me back this year. So last year, we had some areas of growth that we were looking to address. First one was our ease of access to materials. We've had staff turnover a couple times over the last two years. One thing we have noticed is that centralizing our materials is pretty critical. We've been gradually looking to centralize our materials on Canvas and SharePoint. Canvas isn't very helpful to do this, because we can roll some of our former classes to flip those materials to our new teachers and have some materials ready for them. Some of our materials are quite old, and we sometimes have to pull from CD-ROMs to get some of the materials off and find our CD-ROM refers to do this. So we are looking now to gradually replace our textbooks and to get some more centralized online learning platforms that we hope to be looking into it's the next couple of years. online learning platforms that we hope to be looking into it's the next couple of years. So this would be definitely helpful, especially if we get some new staff members in the department. Middle to high school transition, we continue to collaborate with our middle school teachers in regards to, and our high school teachers in regards to student performance and expectations. We've had professional development time this year dedicated to looking at assessments by grade, and we've specifically been looking at the reports and lab writing for grades seven through 12. I wonder, I'll just do a brief summary of this slide, so this is a graph for what we have been looking at for rolling out lab expectations for grades seven through 12 and some laboratory experience. Grade seven and eight do get quite a bit of laboratory experience with they, generally beginning is filling out lab report templates where they'll have a lab in place, and then they fill up template for an introduction section, a procedure, a data, and a pseudo-analysis and conclusion section where they, section, excuse me, where they have to go back and look at the data and draw some conclusions. We'd like to be seeing them to be doing this around twice a year for a larger lab assessment, so we're kind of working towards that. We're looking for biology, our ninth grade students to actually complete a full lab report at least once during their freshman year with a lab. Grades 10, 11, we're kind of looking at students to be completing around one to two formal laboratory reports per year. And then for grades 11 through 12, if those students are in physics, AP Biology, or AP Environmental Science, or levels, Environmental Science Level One, looking for them to complete around two to three formal laboratory reports per year. So this is something that we are working towards, it's not fully implemented yet, but this would be a goalpost that we've hoped to reach. A few things to also address some of those points you made earlier, over last June, we started our Biology Academy and the AP Biology Bootcamp. This was to partially address a bit of that middle to high school transition, but it was also to prepare our students, our ninth grade students specifically, for the Biology MCAS. This idea came from our teachers, Preston Mahana, and this was, all of our ninth grade students spent one day rotating through six classes that were each taught by a science teacher that focused on one of the content areas of the MCAS. So for example, cell biology was one, ecology was another, genetics, et cetera. This program was overall successful, personally, I think it helped to reinforce key concepts, and data-wise, it seemed to have pushed some of our struggling students just over that pass, non-pass line for the MCAS, which was good. In the future, what consideration we may have is to shorten the program to do two half-days instead of the full-day program, because by the end, some of our students were antsy and tired, and they had biology for a full day, and that's a lot for them. And I fully understand that, so maybe two half-days may be better, and we're going to look more at that in the coming month or so, in terms of refining that. A third area of growth we're looking at is building critical thinking skills, and as we mentioned, we're looking at focusing on lab report writing, and we have some ideas for doing that. This year, we also had a larger lab report writing experience in the form of a pseudo-midyear assessment, and this was dedicated to, at the time dedicated to students designing a formal experiment and then writing a lab report for this experiment. It was a long experiment, this was not a one-day, this was several days, with research involved, background information being to be gathered, the experiment performed, and an entire lab report being written. This was for all, this was through all classes, grades 10 through 12, I'm going to go more into it in a few minutes. So, some of our strengths, we have a very enthusiastic team of teachers, they very much enjoy doing hands-on activities and demonstrating scientific concepts to students. We have experienced teachers, we have educators who've either been in education for a while or coming in from a variety of backgrounds. Some of those are in the medical field, some of those are directly from the science and technology field. We also have interactive teachers, a lot of our lessons are group doing, students do a lot of hands-on activities and rather than just speaking and talking the science, which has a lot of benefits to seeing the science rather than just hearing about it. Some of our areas of growth, we are, as I mentioned, looking to centralize access to materials, so this was especially helpful for new staff members in getting those materials centralized into some common resources that are more easy to access. Refining our Biology Bootcamp program, I just went into some of the details on that. And building student scientific literacy, we're working to improve student, we're working with students to improve the use and application of science terminology and help to apply their knowledge to critically analyzing problems. This is through various assumptions you have in class, but also through that laboratory This is what we do, so we have a very hands-on team, we do a lot of different hands-on activities. We have our skiing class, building our towers up below. Last year, my class came to you with our KBUS studies, with some pictures from that. Eric Fisher came from Channel Four last year and came and visited AP, AP Bio, Environmental Science classes, excuse me, took some field trips to various areas of town. On the right, this was actually a fun activity, so Joan McGuinness in our department, set up this little saltwater tank for, it was actually for our Principles of Biology class mostly. Many of these students in this class are EL students, and we wanted to give them an opportunity to also participate in our high-quality performance assessment. So they were looking at invasive seaweeds in various marine organisms underneath a different microscope and having to draw out what they saw. So that way, they were able to draw the pictures of what they saw, and they loved the microscope. So this was a fun activity for them. Addressing the vision of the graduate, so in terms of the vision of the graduate, one of the different, one of the first pillars, a critical thinker and engaged participant, we have many laboratory activities, laboratory practicals, and knowledge-based application exams that allow students to seek knowledge, reason through or weigh evidence before making a decision, and to construct arguments and form conclusions. Be socially competent and contributor and self-aware individuals, we have collaborative assignments, group work and laboratory assignments, and all of these allows students to work with their peers to solve problems. This allows them to successfully navigate social situations because they have to speak with their peers and gather evidence and data with them, and prioritize and manage time effectively. And when I talk about this high-quality performance assessment coming up, this was a critical example of this. And as I just mentioned, this was a good example of this. So our mid-year laboratory assessment required students, over the course of about two weeks, conduct research, design experiments, and create a formal laboratory report, which addresses some of those points you mentioned before. I have a copy, I gave to you all of the rubric that was from my class, this rubric was also emulated through the department, the calendar was utilized by some teachers. This was the rubric for our high-quality performance assessment that we gave, this was a mid-year assessment that started the day we got back from the winter break. And what it was, was an assessment that required students to detail their findings generally in the form of an experiment, and then partial, and then design a lab report around that. Students used the laboratory, the laboratory report rubric that I have given you, this is one that is used in college lab setting. This is useful for students who are college-bound, most of them are going to have to take natural lab science, whether they are going into science or not, or anyone who's going into the field of technical report writing. I have many students who are going into various trade fields, example, HVAC work, some of them are doing inventory for various equipments that family-run businesses, they're going to need to do some technical report writing in their life, this should be beneficial for that. And structured, this, this was a pilot program, but it required students to work on an experiment and a report and follow a designated schedule. So they needed to be able to try to meet deadlines by the end of this in order to pass the successful report. So we're kind of right now going through the data, we're not really analyzing the entire process and how this went, so we're still kind of processing that right now with our department. So we have kind of, most students did very well on this, most students passed very nicely-written reports. I have a sample in that folder there, if you want to look after, one example of the students' work that was very well done, that was a very nicely-written report. We are still working with students, though, on meeting deadlines, and that has been a struggle, I think across schoolwide this year, where some students just did not meet the deadline, and it's now time to figure out, why did we not meet that deadline? What happened along the way, and then look at that and go back and see what we can do to work with that. And then finally, some of our AP scores, so we have two AP classes that we run with the department, AP Biology and AP Environmental Science. So our AP Biology scores dropped this year, as you can see from the graphic. I have two slides here, one is the score in relation to the global average with just the overall percentages, and then one is a specific breakdown of the scores by number. So this is our average scores, there was a drop. I am going to elaborate on what we think as to why. And these are the numbers of students who scored in each category. Now, AP Biology has some history at the school, so that one, you can see a trend. AP Environmental Science was really not much difference, so the average score was very similar, and the numbers in terms of what students scored was also relatively similar. So a few things that we noted, I collaborated with the AP Biology teacher, I teach AP Environmental Science, so we both talked about this. So academically, both groups in AP classes last year, overall, were more challenging and struggled more academically with content compared to previous years, and this was in the Biology section, where we have more data on that. This especially, most of the supports that were needed in these classes, there were more supports needed in these classes, there was some curriculum pacing that needed to be slowed down, and more in-class time was needed to review the concepts, as students were struggling to engage with material. It was overall, this overall, this overall was reflected in the performance for AP Biology as well. A lot of students in the class did not score on their report cards or get grades that weren't as good as they were in previous years. I taught AP Environmental Science, so I can attest to more to certain points in the year. Of my classes, I had taught period one, those are period one, AP Environmental Science class, nine of the 24 students were repeatedly absent or tardy, tardy is important here because it's period one. So when a student's coming in around eight o'clock in this class, tardy at 7:30, you missed most of the class. Seven of those students signed up to take the exam. Also, students who signed up for this class tended to underestimate the nature of the class due to the name Environmental Science, so, and this is actually reflected in the global average as well. So this class tends to have one of the lowest scores globally on AP tests because students are studying Environmental Science. The class is very application-based, so students need to have thorough knowledge of the scientific method in order to address global environmental issues. I provided a sample of a response to illustrate this. So there is a 20-chapter curriculum with this class, with, the knowledge itself is not incredibly deep, but the application part is deep. So they want students to understand the scientific method, and there's always a serious spoken response on this test that all students applying that scientific method directly to a real-world environmental situation. Sometimes they may even incorporate policy and say what laws can be now implemented for this problem to be addressed. Students struggled with this application through last year, so we could get some of the knowledge in, they were good at memorizing and regurgitating, applying it was a struggle. So in part, that is one of the reasons we did that very large study at the end of last year, and ended up to see the application of the content. So I said, we're going out, we're going into Abington, we're going to do a science project from start to finish, where you're going to apply this content, apply what you know, you'll learn about it, you're going to have to write up something, we wrote the lab report together, but I think that was to help the different points across, and tried to help them a little bit. And then in terms of advertising our AP classes, our AP classes are often indirectly advertised to freshmen and sophomores, as students can see and hear about activities in these classes, and are, they can see a lot of time what the work is being done, some of the setups in the classes that may be related to experiments in the classes, they hear through word of mouth through their older siblings as well about them. We have one-on-one discussions with students in the spring of sophomore year about AP offerings, and if the classes match for them, or a good match for them based on their academic interests, future plans, and current science performance. So for example, students who may have an interest in going into the science field or going into life sciences, AP Biology may be a good option for them junior year, for instance. AP Biology and AP Environmental Science also both have moderately high enrollments. This year, there were 22 and 16 students respectively in both these classes.
That's it, is there any questions I can answer?
Heidi, can you pass that?
Yes.
Ms. Corbett, can I ask you a quick question? I want to, so I mean, yeah, the, so the score, the, the scores, I guess, are like, are like the obvious, and I know it's remarked on, I guess my question is more along the lines, if we look at the trend in the biology, it's always been higher than global. That, and we've gone down now, one, two, three, six years in a row, and I know, the first five, it wasn't much, but it really went down from the last year to this year. The global average went down some, but not much, and it's higher than it had been previously. Is there any kind of correlation that you can see there that may be causing anything to occur?
So I will definitely say last year's students struggled, struggled in these classes. As to why they struggled in these classes, it's hard to say 100%, I don't want to go back and say, oh, and, you know, they had limited lab experience through that point, because then we're going to look at, as you said, the global average, and it's like, was everybody on the same boat? I did go and look at some other schools in the area, trying to do a little bit of comparisons in terms of what the scores were there, what the scores were higher, and then some of the policies they have maybe for students selecting these classes. And there is a trend in, generally, schools that have higher scores have a requirement that students need to take the AP test to get in. So we don't have that requirement because there is an faculty piece where you want as many students to take these classes as possible. Sometimes in that case, when you have more students in the class, it tends to slow the patient down at the class, because some of the students who come in maybe not, may not have the intention to take the test, they're here to take the class. So sometimes that affects the pacing of the class, and you have to slow things down a little bit. That could be a factor, I can't say, but that's the smoking factor, but it could be a potential factor.
If you're seeing kids that are, that, like, is it, like, they shouldn't be taking it, and is there a way to stop that from happening? I don't, I don't know how the course selection works, so forgive me on that.
We have a certain set of requirements for students to take the class, so you have to have certain approvals, you have to have certain classes that you have to have taken before you take that. So yes, there is requirements to get in, sometimes students also circumvent that and get into the class.
Okay. And I guess the last one I have, and I just have one for Dr. Boss afterwards, I know you mentioned, and I know this has come up before in other groups too, about the meeting deadlines. So when I'm looking at the rubric though, and maybe it's somewhere in there, is there penalty for not meeting the deadlines, or is that something we can't do? I think we should if we can't, if we can, but, so I don't know, is, and there's like, I didn't read every single box, I mean, no, but is there diminishing returns where if you submit it late, there's no way you can reach the top score, kind of thing, and to a certain point where you can't even pass if you, if you're so late?
So that depends on a teacher as well, so personally, with my lab reports, when I have students submit them, they know they're getting docked if they're late.
Okay.
There's a requirement for that. I think the numbers that we saw that came in late were pretty staggering in some of these classes.
Okay.
Which is concerning, because if you have the majority of students not passing it in, in some of the classes, can we dock everybody?
Yeah.
So it's putting something in place there.
Okay.
I think one, I think the good thing about this pilot is that it got students exposure to writing a strong lab report and having the lab exposure.
Okay.
I think it also highlighted systematically some of the issues that are, we're currently dealing with.
And to me, I don't even, like, I'm not even like an all-in-one, I mean, if somebody's coming to you gradually saying, like, there's one, if they're coming to you saying, and I'm, I'm hypo, I'm hypothesizing, I'm not a teacher, never have been, but if somebody's coming to you, I'm, I'm having trouble working with you, and maybe it's late, you know why they're working on it.
Exactly.
If somebody shows up the day after it's due, and says, yeah, I didn't, like, there's differences.
There's definitely differences in situation, I know with some of those differences in situation as well, where you have students who may be out sick, like, you got sick and you couldn't come to school.
Yeah.
Well, then we're going to work with that student, we schedule the bridge, we'll have time to work with them. We do also have a group of students who.
Yeah.
How can they do it?
Yeah, okay. Dr. Boss, my question for you, I talked to Danielle today, I know she reached out to you, and I know I saw it pop up for the Environmental Science about how many for each score, are you able to send that to her so she gets it, because she couldn't see it tonight?
Yes.
And do you have it for the biology, or are you working to get it for biology?
Yes, I had it.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I was looking at my page at this, at that moment.
I had it.
That's okay. Can you, can you send us all that? Because we don't have that, I don't have those pages. Can you, can you send us all that? Because we don't have that, I don't have those pages. Yeah, yeah, all right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Oh, yes. Sorry. So I'm noticing that there's definitely a bigger emphasis on the lab work, and I think that is a great thing because it is helping all of our students learn how to structure. Do you anticipate that that is going to reflect later in AP scores?
I'm hoping so. I'm hoping that if you saw, for example, that one, our response from AP Environmental Science, the application piece is really important. The application of science is where students struggle. And I think this is across many areas too. I think the application of content is where students struggle. And they're good at regurgitating content. So if you memorize something, I can spit it back to you, or if I find it online, I can spit it back. It's now how can we get them to apply that? And that's what these AP tests are looking for. So we're hoping that if you do more of this hands-on laboratory work, we're there now applying that content in an analysis. Now you have to tell us what that means, that'll help across both these tests.
Perfect. So then my next thing is, as you're piloting the program, are the teachers doing check-ins? Like, the calendar is amazing. Are the teachers checking in to see that the students are in the process? Or is this kind of a floater?
No, this, the expectation is that they were regular check-ins in place.
Okay, so even with the regular check-in? So maybe we can anticipate that once the majority of students have gone through this once and realize that deadlines do matter, perhaps we'll see culture shift and this will start to become more of a norm to follow the calendar and get it done? Does that work?
Yeah, and the calendar, so the calendar was like, I'll lose, so it was a guide. So I said, you know, I'm not great in this on this day, but this should be done this day, and I'm going to see that it's done. And this should be done this day, and this should be done this way. So that way, by Tuesday night, was, I'm just going to do Wednesday, we are not struggling to get an entire thing done. There's a, first, I teach seniors, I go, there's a personal accountability piece here. So by Tuesday in school, I did have some kids who were very frazzled that this was due. I got them in, but we're looking at 11:59 PM, probably 59 seconds, but they scooted those in. So I think the check-in piece was definitely needed. I think this, unfortunately, with the way the school has gone the last heavily, I think there's definitely more of a hand-holding piece where students do need to be led a little bit more through the process.
And then on top of that, because this is, this is way more reflective to me of how the real world is going to work. You know, this is any job, any path of life, even, you know, parenting, this is, you know, you have your schedule. And have, what is the feedback from the, from the students as they're going through? Have you heard much from the students themselves?
So it depends on, so I'll give an example. AP Environmental Science has gone through two lab reports already. I think in that particular class, they were more accustomed to having this. So in there, it didn't seem quite as nerve-wracking. In the, I, Level One Environmental Science had gone through partial lab reports. But maybe they should, they, most of them had written one last year. I think it was definitely in that class, the ones who paced themselves out were in better shape. There was a group who did not seem to pace themselves out as well, and it did put stress on them. And the stress was felt because I received several emails and several pole-aside conversations where stressing out a little bit about this. I go, did you follow this? Did we check in? No, well, did we see now we're going to pick up from this day? And you're going to follow this, and then you'll be okay. So I think it was a life lesson. I think this is helping to teach life lessons. In addition to teaching the science content, I think there was a life lesson piece here that students are still learning, but it's better to learn it here than if they're going to a four-year college and having to wait there, or go off and get a job and having to learn time management and getting things, you know, keeping a schedule at that point. Thank you.
I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
The, I see the number of students who took AP Biology, the exam over the years. Has enrollment been similar in terms of like consistent 22, 23? I know you said there's, I think, 22 enrolled this year?
Enrollment went up this year.
Okay.
Enrollment prior to 2018, I don't have the numbers without, I'm going to go off a little bit of history. The enrollment gradually went up through the years. I do recall those years having less than 10 in some cases.
Okay.
So enrollment has gradually gone up. 2019, it went down. I would say this trend has generally been up. More students are taking those classes. AP Environmental Science went down from this last, year to this year. I had 25 students enrolled last year, we're down to 16. So might have been word-of-mouth that Environmental Science is not, you know, it's a little more rigorous than we anticipated.
Sure. Yeah, it just, the enrollment surprises me in light of the number of careers that follow a scientific path. And what's kind of cool to millennials is, or I guess it's not millennials anymore, these people are something different. But, you know, climate change and all of that. I'm curious if, if and when students know what these classes lead to in terms of a career path? Like, do these kids know that, you know, if you want to, like, I work with a bunch of scientists right now that do things that I don't understand, but I'm like, they use these pieces of equipment and create slime. If my kid knew that by taking these classes, he can create slime and get paid to do it, I think he'd be interested.
Can we, yeah, just look back for a minute. I think things like having a fish tank in the room and seeing the kids pull things out in a microscope and say, if you take Environmental Science, you can do this more regularly too. I think the things that we do in the various classes, but also the fact that some of these classes are shared spaces. So we have to keep some of the setups from the different classes in there. So for example, my Environmental Science classes now spread across three rooms. So I think kids get some advertisement through that. But I do think there was also a strong word-of-mouth through associates and peers, and there was discussion with teachers directly during course selection saying, what are you looking at? You're looking at the medical field, this class is best suited for that, and here's why. Or are you looking to go into bioengineering, you need to take AP Biology. So there is definitely discussion. I think they see a lot of what goes on in the science classes based on the setups and the different equipment and through word-of-mouth. And I also think that we, like, if, like, if we're, yeah.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carver, appreciate your time. Mr. Born, you taking, um?
Thank you.
Okay. Is Karen going to do it, or are you, okay? Oh, yeah, all right. I saw in our principal's report, that's what threw me off. Yeah, Ms. Daisy, go ahead.
I'm here to talk about proposals for the 2025 school trips. And we have both itinerary facilities for Costa Rica in February and Italy in April. I feel like this is, we do this every single year. It's kind of a thing, we know that we travel internationally now. So if you have specific questions related to these trips, I'm here to answer them.
If we make the motion, do we get the chatroom?
Um, that would require a lot of consistency to know. So sure, we'll put you to the list.
Oh, there we go.
What grades?
11 and 12.
For both of them?
Yes.
Okay.
We did a nine, 10, 11 year, and it was like begging, you know, to come. My theory, and I don't know this far back, but eighth graders are hesitant to sign up for what is a high school trip while they're still in eighth grade, and it's, you sign up the year before.
Yeah, yeah.
So we reopened it once they were ninth graders, and we did add some more. But it, I don't know, there needs to be a better way. So then Kristen Gerhart wanted to pitch a ninth and 10th grade trip for next year, and I was going to do it with her. And the price, I mean, everything, I just keep going back to eggs. When the eggs become $7, and the price of everything is up. And we went so far as to like check another company that does this too, because we were like, this is, and their prices were even higher than current classroom. And unless you can get like 25 kids, they were looking at like four grand to go to Grand Canyon. And I feel like they're going to rather wait and go junior year when they can use the country to stay within, so.
Are these running concurrently?
No. What?
Yeah, are they both during April break of 2025?
Italy and April.
Okay, they both say, they both say April.
Oh, they did, sorry, that's a, that's a mistake.
Which one is February?
February is, so originally, Costa Rica was going to be February because Mr. Recibido had asked for Italy to be February. And then, sorry, Costa Rica was going to be April, but then I asked him to switch because it's supposed to be better weather in Costa Rica in February, and better weather in Italy in April.
So Costa Rica is February?
Yes, sorry about that, Costa Rica is February.
And I'm guessing it's the vacation week, both of them, okay.
Typically, like, the two trips going this year are leaving Thursday, it's much cheaper July, not on the Saturday of school vacation.
My last one, is there a limit as to how many kids can go on each of them?
Um, we took 36 to go last year. And the more you take, the more check-ins you're getting. It worked out fine. I think that having traveled with other schools in the past, I would never consider not having the vetting process that we do because there are other schools that are like, any class up?
Yeah, makes sense.
You can bring mom, you can bring sister, you can bring friend, you can bring kids that are already graduated, and it was not ideal to travel with them. But, yeah, I'm comfortable bringing a proper number.
Anybody have any other questions?
I guess my, my one thing is, I do know, I don't have anyone traveling this year, but I do know some of the kids who are traveling, you know, as always with travel, we have some families who are fortunate to be able to pay for it, not a problem. And we do have some students who are working really hard to pay for it themselves. Are we exploring wider opportunities to help these kids fundraise?
So I offered funders, I offered the refund raising opportunities. And one of them was, we used to sell Yankee candles, and Yankee candles stopped doing fundraising. So now we use Charleston Wrap, which is very similar. It's candles, wrapping paper, it's holiday stuff. We have 21 kids, I think, going to Belize and 17 coming to Europe with us. So 38 kids, seven to do it. And one of them made $325. So it can be done, most of the other kids, one, somebody else made 100-ish, and the rest were like 18, 30, 60. So again, like you're saying, I don't know, I mean, it can be done. But Hershey brought a bunch, like, Hilliard's shop up at this, so I did not, I don't have a running tally of that because it was just like, you can keep going to Hilliard's, and you can keep getting more and selling it. And some kids are fortunate that they have parents who have jobs that they just set it in the workspace, and they're sold in a day, and they go back and get more. And others don't really have a means of selling that. So, and then we did a fundraiser in the school itself of, you can throw a pie in the teacher's face at the private. And it did not earn as much as it did last year. But that was more, that wasn't specifically for the kids. That was because we like to get them to Logan Airport ourselves and not have to have, we don't want to try to add more cost to this. So we are taking that money to arrange for transportation. So I'm always open to any fundraising ideas and anything.
I know you are.
Anybody else have anything?
Just my lack of knowledge here, students who play sports, are there exclusions that they are allowed to go on these trips, even head?
Yes, so when we pitched, so if this gets approved, when this gets approved, we're going to have an information meeting for current sophomores and juniors that can come during a bridge walk, and there's a whole presentation. And one of the things we address is sports, and Mrs. Serena usually comes and also talks to the kids. And basically, it's, you cannot be punched, like, you're not going to be kicked off the team or you miss this, so you have to sit out a game, whatever. However, there's always the whole, if the basketball team made a new play while you were gone, you don't know it, you can't just come back and jump right back into your role. If Peter Schaefer comes with us to Italy and Chris Stephson is the starting pitcher for baseball, and, sorry, you're better than to make him back.
Yes, you would be.
And you may come back and realize that they're not going to let him go. So it's obviously something they consider. But in talking to most of the kids, like, obviously, because those sports are together, want them not to, you know, to do that. But at the same time, if you're a senior and you're going to play the sport in college, you usually know by then. It's not like they're going to say, nice, you don't have to go to school to play this. I, I don't love it when kids are like, I really do want to travel, but I can't miss. And especially April because the odds of January's rain out. You know, we had a kid who didn't come to the baseball, and two games were scheduled and both were on that.
And Mr. Serena does have, I mean, I feel like they put a lot of time and energy and effort into writing it out in such a way that it, it does outline that kids will not be penalized for school trips. Just as you said, and I, it feels like there was a lot of, there definitely was a lot of thought and reason.
Yes, and if he has control, or as much control as he has, he will do his best to schedule. Like, he asked me, he said, oh, you're leaving on Thursday, because I mean, you're coming back like Thursday. So therefore, if you could put the game on, not that a jet-lagged student will be much good on a softball game, but, you know.
And same thing with theater, I don't know if there's any conflict. I, I'd love for as many people to go on these trips as they can.
I mean, Preston Mahana is coming with us, and she's one of the, she's, yeah. And Steve Shannon has traveled in February as well, and he was leading the trip. So this usually, I feel like the theater program is a lot of adults, so it's not like they won't have practice. You know, they say on the high.
Great, exciting, I wish I could go.
We're going to do them separately. Anybody have any other further questions before we go? We're going to vote on, we're going to do Costa Rica first, so. Yep, so I'll get that. That's okay, I'll get that when I say it. So I'll be looking for a motion to approve the high school field trip to Costa Rica as amended to the date, to the February break dates, to the break dates in February.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, perfect, I'll second. All in favor? Aye. Similarly, for the trip to Italy, I'll be looking for a motion to approve the Abington High School field trip to Italy as it was presented with an April break in 2025.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you, Ms. Daisy.
Thank you.
Mr. Born for the Abington High School Program of Studies for next year.
Thank you. Before I dive into the Program of Studies, I just wanted to thank Karen for her work in this. We have a late-break and very big piece of information that I was able to confirm today. So we have a member of our community, Nancy McDonough, who's a parent of two former Abington High School graduates. And her daughter Samantha was a graduate class in 2011. She was here when I was in the building. Samantha was a walking ray of sunshine and ear-to-ear grin every time you saw her. Unfortunately, her daughter died tragically in October of 2013. Nancy has then created a foundation called Have a Sammy Kind of Day. And what it seeks to do is fund opportunities for young people so that they don't miss out on these key events in life. So Nancy has reached out to Christina Park, our guidance director, and has, as of today, made some very generous donations. Dropped off something in the neighborhood of $1,000 worth of gift cards for one boy and one girl to attend our prom, price-free. When I mentioned, Ms. Groom, you're concerned and others are concerned about the affordability of trips, she's having a meeting tonight to see if they could fund one student to attend one of these trips in the future. Additionally, they will look to purchase a laptop for a college-bound student before they go off to graduation. And I think she's also exploring an opportunity to create a scholarship for Abington students. As I mentioned, Ms. McDonough was not able to come tonight because she's running this meeting, but I did ask her if it's okay, give her a plug. So please, if you have an opportunity to, especially if you know or have students in need, they are eagerly looking for students to provide some of these supports to. So I just mentioned it to my colleagues at the middle school and others. Nancy is an absolutely wonderful person, Abington resident, and likes to give back to local community. So that's been a positive development that's been, we'll let you know where that goes from that.
Yeah, please pass along our thanks as well, thank you.
Okay, moving on to the Program of Studies. Before I get into the proposed revisions to our Program of Studies for the fall of '24, for next school year, a couple of pieces of information. For the uninitiated, there are layers of courses that exist for a high school or for a school to choose from. The top layer is the district catalog, which is every course ever offered ever in the history of Abington. Then that gets distilled down to the annual Program of Studies. And so what you would be, what would be seeking a vote for tonight is the existing Program of Studies with the updates you have in front of you. From then, once a course is in the Program of Studies outside of independent studies, From then, once a course is in the Program of Studies, outside of independent studies, we are basically bound to only offer courses to students for credit that is in the Program of Studies. However, because of courses in the Program of Studies, it does not necessarily get offered to students. That is typically driven by staffing and other needs within the building. So, for example, you may approve a course as part of these revisions today that never actually get offered to students for course selection. Then the next component is course selection. So these are courses we do put forward to students to gauge their interest. Depending on the number of students that sign up to do that course can speak to whether or not we run that course. And then finally, even beyond that, we may get to a point with all those things, say, we're not able to run this course. All that to say, we endeavor to run as many of these courses as we possibly can, but I just wanted to, um, let folks know that. The other one is a polite word of warning, that nerd territory that I absolutely love scheduling and master scheduling. So answer any question you give me, but if I get a little too excited about things, just, I know Dr. Boston and others will remind me. That's not a deterrent as much as just heads up, this is fun information, sorry. So moving on to the course recommendations or the revert, uh, revisions we seek to make. Some of these are housekeeping, the first for College Board Advanced Placement courses. To add computer science, computer science principle, and AP psychology to our College Board Advanced Placement courses. A new course will be to add the second, um, segment of graphic and digital design. We currently offer graphic and digital design. This proposal would be to add a follow-up section, Graphic and Digital Design Two, which will take the skills and, um, talents the students develop in the first course and be able to develop that in a second subsequent course. The next piece is another piece of housekeeping where it's added AP 3D Art to description for course six twelve. In the paper you have in front of you, this will add the language that is bold and italicized and then drop the sentence that is struck out to reflect the change of that new additional wrinkle to that course, which is adding AP 3D Art Design is an introductory college-level, three-dimensional design course. Students refine and apply skills and ideas they develop out of the course to produce three-dimensional art. This would be in addition to what exists with AP Drawing and AP 2D Art. Moving on to the second page of the document. Dr. Goncalves in the English Department is, um, have been avidly seeking opportunities to do different electives within the English Language Arts curriculum. She and the department have feathered out a bunch of ideas for different electives to students and getting, uh, feedback and gauged interest by way of surveys. And what the English Department has put forward as the seemingly most interesting class is horror and literature and film that you see before you. The description is fascinating, the microb terrifying, has haunted the collective human consciousness for millennia. I don't need to read this for you, you have this in front of you. But anyone that knows the age of high schools, this is why almost every horror film is PG-13, because they know their audience. We know our audience, it is fascinating to kids. So some of the interest here is to provide a new wrinkle to dive deep into the media of, uh, film and literature and hopefully topically in a way that kids are interested. And it also provides a lot of energy with the teacher who teaches courses particularly enthusiastic about them. So that is a new course and it's decided we will try this as a semester basis for the next year. I just need to caution the committee that this is likely a class that may be difficult to run because we currently have all our English teachers maxed out teaching five classes. And some of these can be kind of pinch points where classics can get big into the twenty-eighth range or become a singleton. And then that kicks off a series of issues that you may have heard from Mr. Leonelli about being able to get the band and things of that nature. So there are some scheduling permutations there to be mindful of. The next is a new course, it's a rename and update what currently exists as Electronic Music One and Two. I would agree with Mr. Leonelli's musing, that kind of draws to mind a synthesizer. We've moved past that, with all due respect to Human League. But we are looking to do music production with engineering. And this speaks a little bit more to 21st century, uh, music production, which we'd be in addition to the digital production of music and creation of music, but also podcasting and how to create, record, other high-quality, um, um, audio outputs such as that. And then some more housekeeping items for science, which would be adding environmental science in the science course sequence chart. What Ms. Corbett alluded to earlier, we'd also be changing the prerequisite for AP Biology from student must be recommended by their science teacher to sign up for this course to students must have successfully completed biology and chemistry prior to course enrollment and have completed or be concurrently enrolled in physics. I think they have found, as we discussed, repeated exposures to the life sciences line students up better for performance in that AP Bio, uh, course. And last but not least, the wellness department, just to reflect the full scope of some of the things they discussed in the first AET CPR class, would add personal safety skills to the description of the course. One of the things we do is take a bit of a deeper dive with Alice Training Protocols with those students as part of the umbrella of life-saving knowledge and information. So that's just added there to reflect that change. That would be the total of composed substantive changes to the Program of Studies for our next school year. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Can I ask you one really quick? It's in the first one about the graphic and digital design. So it says the prerequisite is successful completion of Digital Art and Photography One. Is also the prerequisite completion of Graphic and Digital Design One?
Yeah, I think the course goes from Digital Art Photography One to the next one, sorry, mind the sake on the title. So it's not Graphic and Digital Design One, Digital Art Photography One is the preceding course.
Okay, okay, all right.
Thank you.
That's all I had. Anybody else? All right, I'll be looking for a motion to approve the Program, the Program of Studies for next school year as presented by Mr. Born. I'll make the motion.
I can second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Born. Mr. McCurnin for middle school report card update. Mr. McCurnin, I just want the committee to know, um, we do not need to vote on these changes. Can you give just the description of why?
So a check with, of both with, believe it or not, um, council and the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. And because I think what you're gonna learn from Mr. McCurnin is that, um, you're, people are gonna get more information and it really doesn't change the, the overall grading system. So there's really no change that needs any kind of approval. But we certainly need to make sure the committee says yea, yea, you like this, sort of, and I think you will.
So that's exactly right, my thunder has been stolen.
Have a good night, Mr. McCurnin.
Thank you for allowing me to be here to present this to you. I wanna start just by thanking all of the people who work hard at the point. We have those that served on our report card committee over the last year and a half. That's Mrs. President Sullivan, Mrs. Giles, Mrs. Prasan, Mrs. Regan, Mrs. Freitas, Mrs. McDermott, Mrs. Peterson, and Mrs. Graham, all Abington Public Schools staff members. All of our department heads and directors also had input for this, as well as Dr. Boston, I'd like to thank them. The Abington Middle School Council, Pam Millie, Dr. Evi, Emily Flesker, and Tim Leonelli also provided information, and many other Abington Middle School staff members who were part of the very open process that we had in the office. So without them, I'm not standing here. Abington Middle School has had two report cards, one grade five, six, and one grade seven, eight. Prior to the pandemic, uh, grades one through four have moved along to a standard-based report card. Abington Middle School was coming along behind. In the March of 2020, that progress into a halt, along with everything else. It was picked up again last school year and probably brings us to where we are here today. The goals set by that committee from start to end were to have a single-grade five-three report card that provides equity for staff that are recorded, but also clarity and increased information for parents and families. Have accuracy and accuracy of standards and skills that's not, you will see, current in our grade five, six report card and not in our grade seven, eight report card. Have commentary allowed for each course by each teacher that teaches that course that is not part of our current grade five, six report card. Integrate reporting from a standard-based report card in grades four below to a traditional report card in grade nine and above. So the proposed report card format that was projected, there are five-three report cards that will look and feel similar to our current grade five, six report cards. Will maintain traditional grading scales. Will incorporate new learning standards and subject-specific skills, that's new to grade seven and eight and upgraded for grade five and six. Comments will now be provided for each course, that's new to grade five and six. Specialist classes in grade, grade five and six will receive ratings. Currently, specialist classes in grade five and six, we receive an S or an N. And it's up for debate what that means. So this will provide more clarity with the one through four scale that exists as the same scale that parents will see in grade one, all the way up through grade eight. And grade seven and eight will receive letter grades as well as that rating. That's similar to our grade five, six, and seven, eight report cards now, but again, more information presented to folks later. This is our current grade five, six report card. So you'll see that there are skills underneath each of the major subject areas. Those are not learning standards as the state reserves. This is our grade seven, eight report card. What you see when you receive one of these is your child's letter grade, a level of comment, after the conduct, and no other information. This is a sample of what we're moving through. What you have in your packet is a complete suite of grade five, three, eight report cards up to this presentation that I have in grade six and grade seven to show you. So this is the grade six report card. The major subject area classes will still receive a letter grade. And the skills and standards below are either directly taken from standards or drawn from the standards. So in other words, if you look at math, those are the learning standards for math. The learning standards for history and social sciences are presented differently by the state. So these are skills, skills directed from those standards that speak to you. All of these specialist classes have also been updated. You'll still have your attendance block, an academic sheet. Each of these blocks for each course will have a conduct, a work-study habit, and a comment available. Currently, our grade five and six report cards don't have the comment block on the back. Assuming you've all seen one at home, that comment block is written by one teacher. That was very appropriately one teacher taught a kid throughout the day. Right now, our students see two teachers from major subject area classes and a group of other teachers. Everyone will now have the ability to add their comments on their own and you'll get a more accurate representation of your students' behavior. The grade seven report card is very similar with the addition of a final average column. This again comes directly from our existing report cards. The final average column for grade seven and eight students becomes more important as that is used to do things like determine summer school enrollment, but is also often requested by schools, private schools that students are applying to as they move from middle school to high school. Implementation timeline for this would be in Aspen Design starting close to immediately, that will run through spring. Teacher training, the required teacher training is likely to be mostly around technology use as they'll need to, um, go into our existing, uh, gradebooks and align them better to what's presented here. Report card implementation would be in the fall of 2024. We would offer some parent open, open house, parent information sessions so that parents can see this and get their hands on it and feel a little bit before the first recording session of the next school year. Do you have any questions? Happy to answer them.
That was my only question. Right, that was my only question right there when the timeline was, so.
Yes, I do have a question. For, especially I would say for some of our special ed teachers who have never had this level of reporting available to them. A, did you have, I, I tried to make a list of who on there the special ed teachers feel good about? Or, and/or are they gonna require additional time? A lot of them have a lot of, a lot more kids.
Sure, um, so specialist, you're saying, not special ed?
Specialist.
Specialist. Yeah, so that was part of, if we look back at our grade five and six report card, when the final format looked very similar to this, where you see next to reading, there are three white spaces, and next to music, there are none.
Right.
That's because reading is providing a letter grade. So in these conversations I've had at different meetings, I focus on art, it's easy to take my art teacher. So our grade seven, seven and eight, and five and six, our teacher has one teacher, basically. So in any given trimester, she has three hundred students that she sees roughly ten to twelve times per trimester. That's why she's not letter graded now, she's providing the rating. There's no more work to this than there was to her previous, other than the, uh, maybe deeper thought process because it's not an S or an N, it's a one through four. At grade seven and eight, they will get the letter grade. Those teachers see the students for a minimum of thirty sessions in any given trimester. And yes, we consulted with every department head and director in the development of this and specifically, um, held meetings, somebody will know, he's, we'll pretend he's there listening. They had input as to that completely.
And I beg to know, is there, I don't, do our teachers get? They don't, okay. Thank you for knowing what I was asking, okay.
What were you asking?
Do you mind finishing it for the rest of us?
I'm sorry.
Tell us.
Sorry.
We are telepathic now. I was asking if our teachers get blocks to work on report cards.
Okay.
There are some districts will have like floating subs to sit in classrooms while teachers have time to work on report cards. I did not believe we were one of those districts and you have confirmed we are not.
No, I'm correct.
Okay.
Chris, you really knew that was the question?
I knew that.
Just because he did in this awkward moment, brought you to my report cards and Tuesday night.
Anybody else have any questions, Mr. McCurnin?
I have a question. The, the copies that we have in our packet for five, six, and I think even seven and eight, with the exception of like adding Spanish, the, the standards in each of the like ELA are the same year over year.
Sure.
Is that, is that the final draft, that they're always the same?
They, and, and they are the same as you look at the Massachusetts State Standards.
Yep.
It's where the classes, where the standards change as students age up, that's where you'll see differences in the report.
Okay.
Where you don't see them, those standards are the same in five-three.
So even like, number and operations base ten, the fact that that's a standard and, and I could just be arguing this to the state here, but like, five, six, and seven, are you expecting to be at a one for a one through four and fifth, and a two?
No, so, uh, number and option, number operations base ten in the standards has a different level of mastery in grade five than it does in grade eight. So the grade eight students would be mentioned against that in grade eight, the grade five students would be mentioned against that in grade five.
So I guess as a parent, I'm like, okay, why is my seventh grader doing numbers in base ten? Because I'm not pulling out a book from the state. We, and that might be to your education point. And probably parents don't even care, because a lot of them don't even look at this. But I would be wondering that and how to find more info.
That can certainly be part of the parent information sessions that we provide in the fall for a further explanation of what those standards are.
Almost like what it mean, here's the standard, here's what it means for fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth.
And even from a student's perspective, you know, I have that student that's in Aspen every single day checking her grades. She's going to be very angry and is very angry when she gets like a two or a three in term one. I think that expectation training is helpful too, in that some of these things aren't covered until later in the year.
Can I, um, jump in there too? That, that's part of the parent information that will be happening that we did with the elementary families also, that the standards are end-of-year standards. So at the beginning of the year, we expect most students to be a two or a three. If you're a one, we're gonna be doing, giving you some extra support. If you're a four, we're gonna be challenging you, but they're all end-of-year standards. So most of the year, including your family, kids should be getting twos and threes.
Yeah, and I think one through four, the kids don't, my kids don't see their report card. But in fifth grade, when they have access to everything and they're taught to check their grades, it can become obsessive. Now they have a lot more numbers to be obsessive over. That's a me problem, not a student problem, but.
No, I'm hearing this problem and I'm understanding it.
I worry about the anxiety level of some kids.
I have one that has that problem, and I have one that will not have that problem.
And do we, for our, um, students who are within the special ed realm, is there a, is there a further reporting sheet if needed, or is everything?
So any reporting differences or curriculum differences that are provided or modifications for special education students are outlined in their IEPs.
Right.
So the reporting tool is the same, but they also get additional reports on their individual goals.
As it's outlined in the IEP.
Yeah.
Yep.
The report cards are the same though.
That's what I was hoping, I just wanted to be sure that, okay.
Anybody else have any questions? Thank you very much, Mr. McCurnin. Report of the Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Michelle, no time, no talk. Uh, missing one, sorry.
Sorry, I would love to speak, but I think it's.
I would love to speak, but I think it's Dr. Robbins.
Dr. Robbins, I'm sorry. I skipped you for a second. It was at the bottom. Report of the Director of People and Personnel Services. Go right ahead.
Thank you. So I'm here to speak, Addington's support and pursuing membership to the South Shore Educational Collaborative. The South Shore Educational Collaborative provides special education services that are needed for students who require intensive interventions that most public schools are not typically equipped to deal with. The South Shore Educational Collaborative has locations in Hingham on the Rockland Line, so about 13 minutes from here. It also has a location in Randolph, so about 15 minutes from here, and then one and a half, just about 30 minutes away. Our district currently primarily relies on the North River Collaborative and Leeds Collaborative. But over the past few years, we've made greater use of the South Shore Educational Collaborative. Currently, we have 10 students enrolled in South Shore Education projects. Overall, we have approximately 30 students out of district. So this would represent about one-third of our out-of-thei students. Within the South Shore Education Collaborative, we have five students in the community school, which services elementary-age students with intellectual disabilities and autism, two students at the community school, which services students with multiple disabilities, including significant cognitive impairments, one student in the middle school therapeutic program, and two students in the high school therapeutic program, which also includes a vocational component. By joining the collaborative, we get the following benefits. First of all, we generally get priority for accessing service providers who could come from the collaborative's network and provide services in our district, or when we seek to enroll our students, we get a bit of priority in the admissions process. Secondly, we get a reduced tuition rate for each student who enrolls. Third, we get to participate on the governing board, which would allow us to advocate for programs and services that meet Addington students' needs. And then finally, we have opportunities to participate in professional development or have our staff participate in professional development that's restricted to members. So in order to join the South Shore Collaborative, as it's outlined in the membership regulations, it requires the school committee to vote in favor of that and for us to share our minutes. And then just one sort of caveat I'll share is that in the, in the membership regulations, it's required that we go through this process 180 calendar days before July 1st. And technically, we're around 160 calendar days before July 1st. So I spoke with the executive director, and it's a little up in the air whether or not they'll accept us for the 2024-25 school year or 2025-26 school year, but we should know in the near future what our status is.
Okay. I guess I have one question. So you said we have students there already, so you're able to have students there even if you're not a member?
Yep, that's correct. It's just, and they provide services faithful to the IEP. The only challenge is just that we pay a higher tuition rate, and sometimes we'll try to get students into one of their programs.
Can't get as many members. Okay, okay. That makes sense.
Would, would the vote to join this collaborative, with the understanding that we may or may not be accepted in, would we be looking at removing ourselves from one of the other ones, or are we looking at this in addition to?
In addition to.
Okay.
And do any of the other collaboratives, would they frown upon us being a part of additional collaboratives? Like, is it a detriment to any of the others that we belong to?
No, I think there was a moment in time probably years ago where a district could participate in one collaborative or maybe two and have all their, all their needs met. But it's currently, because the way that collaboratives specialize is it's often the case you have to lead your member collaboratives in order to get the service you need for your students. And we've just found over the past few years that more and more are relying on a South Shore collaborative. But they're not mutually exclusive in participating in one doesn't, isn't at a detriment to participation in the collaborative. The more the merrier.
I'll be looking for a motion to approve membership for Addington to the South Shore Collaborative, whatever school year it ends up happening, but either way.
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Dr. Robbins. Yeah, just let us know what year it ends, what school year it ends up being for when you find out. Okay, thank you. All right, now I'm good. Now, Dr. Michelle, you are up.
Thank you very much.
You were good.
I have for you tonight, a proposed FY25 capital plan to be submitted to the town for consideration to be included in the town's capital plan. You might remember, last year, about the last year and a half, the town engaged with a consultant to do a five-year capital plan that included the school department. That is also being looked at, and one of the items here is on that five-year plan, and as, even though you do a five-year plan, you have other capital needs that come up. The first I'm recommending is, well, is on the capital plan, is a roof replacement at the Woodsdale School. That's been on there for a number of years. As I've reported in the past, the roof right now is being, is tight. We do have roof leaks. As of right now, our roof contractor is still able to repair them. However, every time they say this roof is at about the end of its usable life, but they're able to repair it again. But this will be a significant cost, and we may be eligible to cost share with MSBA when the time comes. At this point, it's about, it's about $1.5 million. The second is for Beaverbrook Elementary School to resurface all paved areas, including the pay area, a play area, and resetting the storm drains. That is, you want to keep your paved areas tight and not have big puddles and not have trip hazards. And so this is to repave $725,000. That was, that number was done in conjunction with John Stone at the DPW. Update the playground equipment in the large playground equipment behind Beaverbrook School for $200,000. Clean out the courtyard, one of the courtyards of the dirt and fall and material that's in there. Put down a rubber play surface and possibly install a small handicap-accessible play structure, $50,000. And then the last item is the exterior ADA compliant ramp in front of the Folio School. And that is currently in the town's capital plan. We've done, in conjunction with the town manager, a, they've, we've had architectural plans made for that, and it'll need to go out, once it's funded, go out to bid and be built.
Dr. Michelle, I think this is fully on me, because I was writing something down at the time. Can you just, if, you probably already said it, but the difference between playground equipment and courtyard playground equipment?
Sure. Play, the $200,000 play structure would be the current large play structure that's behind the Beaverbrook School.
Yeah.
And that's the court, and the courtyard is, at Beaverbrook, there's two smaller courtyards.
Okay.
And so this would be to clean out, put down a rubber play surface, and a smaller play structure within one of the courtyards.
Is that like in the middle of the building, kind of, if you look from above?
Yep.
Okay, all right.
Yep.
This is not the playground that was completely redone by a separate committee, so.
That is.
Sorry, everybody knows that.
Thank you.
No problem. Anybody have any questions?
That's the, I believe, Beaverbrook Playground as opposed to Beaverbrook School.
Anybody have any other questions?
I, can I just add?
Yeah, of course.
We submit to the town's, our capital needs. That doesn't mean that those get funded, but it's necessarily, but it's also acknowledging to the town that these are the things that we need at this time.
No, thank you very much. Anybody have any questions?
I just think it's worth noting too that, you know, Woodsdale and Beaverbrook, although they are older schools, it's, the MSBA process of doing any major renovation is measured in five to seven years. So we've been putting Band-Aids on the roof for a while. I don't think we're going to get a five to seven year, even if today we decided we were going to build a new school. It's not happening. Well, I've got a kid in that school.
I feel like this ramp has been on here for several years now.
It has. It has. It's a pretty significant amount of money to be done through capital and not have to, we don't want to have to go to, to borrow money for it.
Right.
So, but the town, the town manager and finance committee is aware of the, the real need, the ADA compliant need. We've looked at different options of how to get our main floor at the Folio ADA compliant, and the most cost-effective is to do a ramp. And this ramp would be one that is built and bricked in so it more matches the front of the building and would enter you into that middle floor.
The, I understand that at least one, if not two of our schools is also dealing with the boiler that is on very borrowed time perhaps, or at least systems that are.
Systems.
Systems.
Yes.
But the roof is really the thing that is probably going to go first. Is that what we're looking at? Maybe.
We are having some significant heating issues at the Beaverbrook School, and it's, it has to do with the infrastructure of the, the piping system is actually within the slab. And so we have boilers that we are, they're original to the building, we're continually maintaining, and the steam that's being pushed out of the boilers is going through piping that's in the slab that is 60-plus years old. And we have had numerous steam leaks. We've had to break through the floor. I haven't had to, but Jason Lynn is amazing. And there's a absolute concern regarding the heating plant at the Beaverbrook School.
Just to clarify, these steam leaks are not dangerous to our students?
No, 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 no. They're in the slab. So they actually don't come out. We just know it because the pressure is lower. Thank you. That's an important piece of that. We know it because there's pressure issues within the system. And there's also, there's also crawl spaces under the gyms that have had piping leaks as well. A water leak, I should say.
Okay. And, and people that have worked really hard to make it all work for a very long time.
Yes.
Probably well past the time period when it should have worked. Okay. Thank you.
We have, I will say, it's not in its finished form, but we did engage with a consultant to do an analysis of the heating systems at both the Woodsdale and the Beaverbrook to get a magnitude of what repairs or replacement would cost. We don't have a final report on that yet, but that may help make some decisions also.
And clearly, we'll find out when, at some point in time after you find out, right?
Oh, yes. Yes. Yep.
Okay.
Anything else?
I do have one other, sorry, to add.
Okay, go ahead.
Just as a conversation.
Yeah.
Last year, one of the items on the capital plan was for new cafeteria furniture for the Beaverbrook and the Woodsdale. That furniture is also very antiquated, and they, I hate to use this to talk about it like this, but they cannibalize one table to get parts to fix other tables. And our food service program is able, we believe at the end of this year, with our high participation rate and the amount of money that we are getting for reimbursement for our school breakfast and lunch, we believe that the food service program is actually going to be able to support the purchase of cafeteria tables for both the Beaverbrook and the Woodsdale.
Wow.
So removed from this?
So it was removed from the cafeteria.
Outstanding.
So I'll be looking for a motion to approve the fiscal year 25 capital plan as presented by Dr. Michelle.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
No problem. Up next, our next school committee meeting is going to be Tuesday, February 27, 2024, at 7:00 PM here in the library. Just some dates to remember. So one ad that wasn't in here, so Addington Education Foundation has their annual trivia fundraiser on Saturday night. It starts at 7:00 PM. It's at the Knights of Columbus on Hancock Street. Doors open at 6:30. I know they still have, I think I was told today, three to four tables available, tables of 10 for $250. If you don't have a full table, ask them, they may be able to with somebody else. So I know they're still looking for that. On Tuesday, February 13th, there's going to be, at 6:30 PM is a CPAC meeting here in the library, and at 6:00 PM is the boosters meeting in the cafeteria downstairs. Friday, February 16th is an in-service early release day for students. The following week, Monday, February 19th to Friday, February 23rd, is winter vacation break. And on Monday, February 19th, it is also President's Day, and all school offices and buildings will be closed. Anybody else have anything to add before we close? So with that, I'll be looking for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all very much.